Good morning. Welcome to the Muskogee Creek National Council Regular Session Meeting. Today is Saturday, December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. The time is ten A.M. My name is Speaker William Lowe and I call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Second Speaker, or excuse me, excuse me. At this time, I would like to ask for our invocation from Reverend Jamie Moss, Fife Indian United Methodist Church.
Thank you for this honoring this privilege. We appreciate the opportunity and we don't take it lightly. And I send you greetings from Fife Indian United Methodist Church. If you will, let us pray. Creator God, we thank you for being our provider and our protector, our strength and our shield, our life sustainer, oh God, and we just bless you for that today. God, I lift up today our Miko Hill and our Hinaha Beaver. And I pray, Father, that you will continue to give them strength and courage as they negotiate with entities outside of us, God, on our behalf. And Father, I thank you for this National Council who has come together today, God, to do things, to conduct business where the nation is concerned. And so, Father, I pray, God, your wisdom upon them. You said, "If any man lacketh wisdom, let him ask of God, who giveth liberally to all men, and you don't withhold." And so, Father, we thank you for your wisdom today for each and every council member and each and every person here. Father, I pray, God, you will continue to protect and keep us, God. I thank you, Lord, that you continue to provide for us as a nation. And we just bless you for all the things that you're doing in and through us, God. Continue to be glorified through us. And we will give you the praise, the glory, and the honor for you are the one who keeps us and provides for us and sustains us. It is in your son's holy name that we give you glory and honor. Amen.
Madoff Reverend Moss, for those great words and great prayer. At this time, I would like to ask for the roll call, National Council Secretary, Alicia Strobel.
Speaker William Lowe.
Here.
Galen Cloud.
Yomal Lega.
Mary Crawford.
Yalaga.
Joyce Steer.
Yalaga.
Patrick Freeman.
Here.
Sandra Golden.
Present.
Leonard Gouge.
Here.
Nelson Harjo.
Here.
Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Randall Hicks.
Present.
Robert Huff.
Present.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Inyahola Osborne.
Present.
Daryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Speaker, you have sixteen present, zero absent.
Sixteen present, zero absent. That constitutes a forum. Any business conducted today will be valid. Before we get on to our agenda, I would like to recognize our Second Chief of the great Muskogee Nation, Dell Beaver. Thank you for being here, Second Chief. I would like to also introduce our royalty, Miss Muskogee Nation, Tima Yarji, and Junior Miss, Chanova Barnett. Madoff, for being here. Cabinet members, thank you all for being here as well. We greatly appreciate seeing you all. Onto approval of minutes. We have minutes from an emergency session, October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two. Planning session, October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two. Pre-agenda, quarterly session, October twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two. Emergency session, November nine, two thousand twenty-two. Planning session, November fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. Pre-agenda, regular session, November nineteen, two thousand twenty-two.
Speaker.
Yes, Representative Marshall?
I make a motion for the approval of the minutes with any necessary changes.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to approve the minutes with any necessary changes, seconded by Representative Thomas Inyahola Osborne. Do we have any discussion, Representatives? Any minutes discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Inyahola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. All aforementioned minutes have passed. Onto the order of business. TR twenty-two dash one seven one. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing Principal Chief to execute an agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation and Oklahoma State University Center for Health Sciences on behalf of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsor, Second Speaker, Robert Huff.
Motion adopt.
Second Speaker, Robert Huff, makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joyce Steer. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one seven one is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one seven two. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a contract with Toast, Inc. for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsor, Second Speaker, Robert Huff.
Motion adopt.
Second Speaker, Robert Huff, makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Anna Marshall. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one seven two is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one seven three. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a contract with RLD ATIX for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsor, Second Speaker, Robert Huff.
Motion adopt.
Second Speaker, Robert Huff, makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Leonard Gouge. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one seven three is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one seven four. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a contract agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation and Legal Aid Services of Oklahoma, Inc. for the purpose of providing legal services for the Muskogee Creek Nation Reintegration Program. Sponsor, Representative Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Inyahola Osborne. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one seven four is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one seven five. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to submit a grant application to United States Department of Agriculture for the benefit of the Food Distribution Program. Sponsor, Representative Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Inyahola Osborne. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one seven five is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one seven six. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending TR twenty-one dash zero seven three. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to negotiate a real estate contract and related documents for the purchase of property in Oakmogie County, Oklahoma. Sponsor, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mary Crawford. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one seven six is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one seven seven. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Muskogee Creek Nation and Seminole Nation of Oklahoma for the shared use of courtrooms. Sponsor, Representative Sandra Golden.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Sandra Golden makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Inyahola Osborne. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion, council representatives? Hearing no, yes, Representative Gouge?
I'd like to hear an explanation how this would work.
Yes, sir. Do we have anybody from Seminole Nation or our courts that would like to come down? Yes, sir. If you'd please make sure the microphone is on and introduce yourself, sir. Pleasure seeing you again.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. I am Stephen Barnes. I am the Chief District Judge for the Seminole Nation Tribal Courts and would just like to say that this is an agreement between the Seminole Nation and the Muskogee Nation that would allow the Seminole Nation to exercise jurisdiction over cases that arise within the Seminole Nation boundaries that in the Creek Nation. Our tribal courts building is currently located in, within the boundaries of the Muskogee Nation. And part of that agreement is, or within that agreement, is for the Muskogee Nation to allow the district judges of the Muskogee Nation to utilize courtrooms in our building to do that.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir. Do we have any discussion, questions, comments? Madoff, for your time, sir. Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, sir.
Any more discussion, council representatives? Representative Thomas Inyahola Osborne?
Thank you, Speaker. During the BFNJ meeting, Judge Barnes had mentioned that he would allow this Creek Nation to utilize their courtrooms. But I'd also like to hear from Judge Prescott on how we would utilize those courtrooms.
Judge Prescott, the floor is yours.
Morning again, thank you. Absolutely. I think we spoke at the BFNJ about the need for additional space. We've had three jury terms that I've headed up this year with over five hundred people set for juries. And being able to utilize these courtrooms can move our cases in a more efficient way. I think we've talked specifically about transportation. It is a huge barrier for our citizens. One that results in warrants sometimes or inability to even get services. So having locations within our reservation boundaries that we can utilize for court services is integral to the success to getting to our citizens and getting to their services too. So I think the best way to describe how we would utilize that is if we wanted to set up monthly dockets or reach out to Seminole Nation for specific cases, whether it be a trial or the need for a larger area, then we could arrange that with them. I was a part of the discussion with the agreement, so I don't know all the details, other than that space is important. And I think we could utilize that throughout the nation's reservation and utilizing those existing resources, especially with one of our five civilized tribes, is a great idea. I don't know why it would be a terrible idea to do that.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have any comments, questions for Judge Prescott?
Thank you, Judge Prescott. Thank you, Speaker.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hearing no other discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one seven seven is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one seven eight. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the execute of a sub-recipient contract for services micro grant, subaward containing a waiver of sovereign immunity with the National White Collar Crime Center, NW three C. Sponsor, Representative Sandra Golden.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Sandra Golden makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one seven eight is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one seven nine. Council representatives, this legislation will require a two-thirds vote of the full council. TR twenty-two dash one seven nine. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation confirming the nomination of Shannon Prescott to serve as the District Trial Court Judge for the Family Law Division, including child support, of the District Trial Court of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsor, Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by our Second Speaker, Robert Huff. Do we have any discussion? Have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Monks.
Mary Crawford?
No.
Joyce Steer?
No.
Patrick Freeman?
Aye.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
No.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
No.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Inyahola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
No.
Speaker, you have eight in favor, six against, and one to abstain.
Eight in favor, six against, one to abstain. TR twenty-two dash one seven nine fails. TR twenty-two dash one eighty. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, nominating Danette Mauser to serve as the District Trial Court Judge of the District Trial Court Civil Division of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsor, Representative Mark Randolph.
Speaker, I'd like to postpone until the emergency meeting.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to postpone until the next emergency meeting, seconded by Representative Thomas Inyahola Osborne. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir. Representative Randolph?
Miss Mauser wasn't aware about pre-agenda, about the interview.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to give her a chance to be able to interview.
Very well, understood. Any other comments, questions, council representatives? Hearing none, for the motion to postpone, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one eighty will be postponed until the emergency meeting. TR twenty-two dash one eight one. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending TR twenty-two dash zero two zero. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a real estate contract and related documents for the purchase of property in McIntosh County, Oklahoma. Sponsor, Representative Randall Hicks.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Inyahola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say that again, Representative Harjo?
Aye.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Do we have any no votes? Hearing none? TR twenty-two dash one eight one is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one four nine. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing a budget modification in excess of ten percent for the Muskogee Creek Nation Office of Environmental Services for FY two thousand twenty-two. Sponsor, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Inyahola Osborne. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Inyahola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Uh huh.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA twenty-two dash one four nine is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one five zero. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of the two thousand twenty-two Native American Agricultural Fund Grant for the benefit of the Muskogee Loan Fund. Sponsor, Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Uh huh.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Inyahola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA twenty-two dash one five zero is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one five one. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of the District Attorney's Council, two thousand twenty-two JAG LLE Grant Award for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Light Horse Police Department. Sponsor, Representative Thomas Inyahola Osborne.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Thomas Inyahola Osborne makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Anna Marshall. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion, council representatives? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Thomas Inyahola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Uh huh.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA twenty-two dash one five one is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash one five two. This is a substitute law. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation appropriating funds to purchase radio equipment for various departments. Sponsor, Representatives, William Lowe. Co-sponsor, Representative Sandra Golden.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Sandra Golden makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion?
Speaker.
Representative Golden?
I'd like to have Bobby Howard come and explain the additional information.
Emergency Management Director Bobby Howard, the floor is yours, sir.
Good morning, Speaker. Second Speaker, Council, Second Chief. So from the original meeting, the decision was to use ARPA funds, which authorized the nation to increase the number of items so that we could outfit projections within this year for the Light Horse, as well as departments that had not been included. The bailiff, tribal support, child enforcement, the AG's investigator. So as you see the document that I brought you, we basically went up twenty-five vehicle radios, which we have a hundred and twenty-two vehicles. And we have vehicles that are slated to be purchased to replace some vehicles that are not operational and then additional vehicles. So we have the one twenty-five. The handhelds went up twenty-five as a projection for additional officers that we should see sometime this year, as well as the bailiff. Again, the two folks from tribal child support and the AG's office. The two big items down at the bottom underneath the additional items is the installation, which I originally, when we were going to use tribal funds, was going to use FEMA dollars from my account to cover. But when we moved to the ARPA funds, you all know I don't like to spend tribal dollars on anything that I don't have to. So we were able to, and it's an authorized cost under ARPA for the installation of the equipment. And then the LTE service for five years for all of the total radios, which also include the thirty-five from my grant. So the nation, if you look on the second page, is going to have three hundred and twenty-three new pieces of radio equipment to outfit the public safety departments within the nation. That includes health, the ambulances, the hospitals, the clinics, Light Horse, emergency management, the additional folks that we talked about here, transit, the three tour buses. They'll have communication in case something. Because right now, when they go out, they're just out. So this is a comprehensive overall plan for the entire nation. It's expandable. We also have an agreement that we are working with AEP PSO. We'll be able to talk within fourteen states with our radio communications.
Outstanding.
Any questions?
Have any questions for Director Howard?
Yes, sir.
Representative Hicks?
Thank you, Speaker. Mr. Howard, what's the actual need for this?
The nation, one, doesn't have a comprehensive plan. Two, we have about a sixty-five percent solution on radio coverage in the south of the nation. And, you know, our citizens, nor our Light Horse, nor my folks, our ambulance service works on cell phones as we speak right now. So this is a plan that will take us into the future. It's fully expandable and we can cover the entire nation's boundaries. It's a safety issue, to be quite honest. Our citizens, as well as our officers and our emergency services folks.
When you say safety issue, can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
So if they're in an area, they can't take the call that someone is being murdered or their home is being broken into or they've had a heart attack and the ambulance service has no coverage, they don't know where to go. We're way behind on our communications with our folks that are our first responders. And we need to correct that deficiency.
If nobody else has any questions for Mr. Howard, I'd like to ask Captain Phillips a question.
Very well. Do we have any other questions for Director Howard before we ask Chief Phillips to come down? By all means, Representative Hicks. Thank you, Bobby.
Speaker, as Chief Phillips is coming down, I just wanted him to share a story that he shared with me earlier. We were speaking on this legislation, and I'd just like for him to share his story.
Chief Phillips, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Speaker, Council. I had spoke with Representative Hicks, and I told him the situation that I'd ran to. I was out with four individuals that were riding four-wheelers at Middle Creek Number Two at the cemetery. When I encountered him, I didn't have a radio or phone calls. And it just so happened, a Holdenville officer had heard my traffic, my radio traffic, saying that I was going out there. He, being aware that we didn't have radio coverage out there, he came and he stood by. He seen I was out with four. We were able to get the situation resolved. So with that, also, as you all are aware of the shooting that had occurred at the Warren Building in Tulsa, we had to have one of the TPD officers run as a liaison for our officers that were there to assist them. We had to have one of the TPD officers go back and tell them where they wanted the guys. And the guys would move forward, and he kept running back and forth. And I am in agreeance with this, with Mr. Howard. This will mitigate a lot of that, and we'll be able to talk to other agencies such as Tulsa, Wagner, our bigger agencies. And it's just an officer safety issue, and I think this will break down that barrier.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief Phillips. Any questions, comments for Chief Phillips? But oh, for being here, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Any other comments or questions, Representative Hicks? Are you good to go?
I'm good. Thank you, Speaker.
Outstanding. Yes, sir. Last call. Any last comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry? Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Mm-hmm.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
15 in favor, zero against, NCA 22-152 is adopted. Last item on the agenda, NCA 22-153, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation approving the comprehensive annual budget for fiscal year 2023 and providing for appropriations. Sponsor Representative Randall Hicks.
Speaker motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? I'll ask the sponsor if he has any discussion first. You good to go, sir?
Yeah, I'm good to go. Thank you.
Okay, Representative Golden.
Yes, thank you, Speaker.
Yes, ma'am.
I've had a lot of difficulty with this cab. Number one, we received it late. We didn't really have time to look into this, all of the budgets. There were information that we received at the last minute. And the more that that happened, the more I became ashamed and disappointed because I really believe that we can do better than this. There, it just seems across the board that there's a disregard for our tribal laws. There was a time when we were supposed to have this, and we didn't. Citizens have to go by policies and procedures of our departments. It hurts me when I see people being denied because they didn't get their information in on time or that they have their information on time and they have to wait 90 days before it is processed. And during the holidays, it's very, very difficult for our citizens. The salary increases, I understand that. We've gotten bonuses and incentives for our employees, but there seems to be no consideration or compassion for our citizens. During this time, and after the pandemic, our inflation has increased so much that people just can't afford things. And I don't know about anybody else, but I just got propane, and I had to have cash on delivery, and that was over $400. Imagine what that does to an elder or young families for their Christmas or their Thanksgiving. People are getting kicked, they're getting evicted because they don't go by the rules. But we don't hold our feet to the fire for these people that are department heads. And for the salaries that they're getting, I expect it to see much better. And we don't see that. And it hurts because I know citizens are struggling. And it seems like we're going backwards instead of forward. So I have a hard time sponsoring this or supporting it, especially when somebody tells me, a Creek citizen says, "Well, if they make us wait 90 days, we should make them wait 90 days." So we have to look at fairness and what's right for our citizens. And to me, this is not right. I can't support it. Thank you.
But oh, Representative Golden, any other discussion?
Speaker?
Representative Joseph Hicks?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone until the next emergency meeting.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to postpone until the emergency meeting. Seconded by Representative Patrick Freeman Jr. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Representative Hicks?
Thank you, Speaker. Representative Hicks, what's the reasoning for postponing?
I feel there's a need for us to visit about this a little bit more as a full council, instead of individual committees, and to possibly get a chance to speak with Second Chief and Chief about it a little bit.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
No.
Robert Huff?
No.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
No.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
No.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
No.
Galen Cloud?
Mm-hmm.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
No.
Nelson Harjo?
No.
Speaker, you have eight in favor, seven against.
Eight in favor, seven against, NCA 22-153 will be postponed until the emergency meeting. That concludes our agenda. Council representatives, we are on to other business. Do we have any other business, representatives? Hearing, seeing no other business announcements. Do we have any announcements? Representative Gouge?
Thank you, Speaker. I want to announce that the Veterans Department, ran by Mr. Winn, they have a concert, benefit concert for veterans. And their entertainment will be Penny Tucker on February 4th, 2023. Tickets are 50, 65, and 75. It's to support the veterans, the homeless, and a variety of other supportive issues.
Yes, sir. Very well.
Speaker?
Representative Joseph Hicks?
I'd like to announce that the Muskogee Creek Nation Head Start Program is partnering with the Oklahoma Blood Institute to host a blood drive at the O'Moggie site on Tuesday, December 20th, from 10:00 to 3:00. And the people, the donors, will receive a long-sleeved t-shirt and also a holiday ornament.
Outstanding. Be ready to give blood on the 20th, folks. Thank you, Representative Hicks. Any other announcements, council representatives? Hearing, seeing none, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second Speaker Robert Huff makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, we are adjourned at 10:36 PM. And I would like to ask Second Speaker Robert Huff to say our benediction, please.
Dear Holy Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for bringing us together to make the decision for the tribe, Lord. Our pledge to you, with everyone who is God, is in our nation, Lord, and pledge to you. Bless everyone with a wonderful Christmas, Lord. And for the reason that we have Christmas, Lord, let's keep that in our mind, Lord. God directs us to have a safe trip home where it may take us, Lord. We ask all us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Everyone, please get home safe. Thank you for being here. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. My doh.